Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Womack.
Here.
All present.
At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation, give it a nod by Pastor Jeremiah Tatum from the Willa Avenue Church of Cross, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag.
Will you bow with me as we pray? Our Holy Father in Heaven, we thank you for being our God. We thank you for your creative work that brought us into this world and for the grace that you show to us every day by giving us life and breath and all things. And we give you all the glory and honor and praise for the things that we have in every way. We want to thank you tonight that we can assemble freely here as a group of people within this community to serve our community. We're thankful for Putnam County and for the city of Cookeville. We're thankful for what it means to us individually and together. Father, we pray for it. We pray for every person here and for those that are being represented by those that are here. We pray that you will help to guide the decisions that are made here, that they might be in the best interest of each individual, that you might be glorified and that there might be peace in our community, that we might be productive, that we might be able to use the gifts that you've given us to serve our families and our community and above all you, Lord. We are so blessed in this nation to have the freedom to assemble, freedom to make our own laws and to serve, the freedom to pray as we are at this time. And we pray, Lord, that those things will never be taken from us, but we'd be willing to fight for those things. We pray for our military, both here and abroad, that you might watch over them and keep them safe and be with their families. We pray also for all the families of those who are represented here that make the sacrifices so these meetings can take place. We just ask that you bless each home that is here represented. Father, watch over us. Help us to do things with the best interests of others' minds, putting others before ourselves, being forgiven, being kind. And we thank you most of all for sending Jesus to die for us. And we pray all these things for His name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three, we'll consider approval of agenda as presented. Do we have any changes?
We need to add item seven D. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for specialized architectural engineering services for the proposed police department headquarters and future facilities. Sponsor Chief Randy Evans.
All right. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item four, consider appointment for A, consider appointment to the sewer regulations appeals board. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we have a couple of board members' terms that have expired on our sewer regulations appeal board. Board was established in 1988. It's made up of five members appointed to three-year terms. They shall not serve more than two full three-year terms without a one-year break. The board's set up to conduct hearings on appeals of the decisions of the director and actions taken under and pursuant to the sewer use ordinance. Our current members, Dan Ike, Dennis George, there are the terms that are going to expire. Brian Johnston, the plant manager at Cookeville Plating, and Kevin Young, a civil engineering professor at Tennessee Tech, has agreed to serve, and we would recommend their approval.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All vote?
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Four B, consider appointment to the board of zoning appeals. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, the terms of Dr. Paul Bonner and Kay Detwiler, as members of the board of zoning appeal, expire this month. Members of the board of zoning appeals serve three-year terms and are appointed by the council. Both Dr. Bonner and Ms. Detwiler have indicated that they no longer wish to be or wish to serve on the board. Paul served on the board since 2009 after serving on the planning commission for six years, and Kay's been on the board of zoning appeals since 2000, so she's served for 14 years. We've contacted Mr. Elwood Irvin and Jonathan Ward, and both have agreed to serve if appointed and we would recommend for their appointment.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Under old business, five A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on January 8th, 2015. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Five B, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-141221 rezoning 385 East 13th Street from RS-10 Single Family Residential to RM-8 Multi-Family Residential. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, this is the location of the property being considered for rezoning. There's the actual zoning. We've had no calls or comments since first reading, and this was approved conditionally on first reading, subject to a plat being submitted and combining parcels three and four, on which are these two tracks, into one parcel. That has been done. Therefore, we would recommend for final approval of the ordinance.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item five, five C, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-141222 rezoning 319 and 339 West 8th Street and 340 West 9th Street from RD Single Family and Duplex Residential to CL Local Commercial. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, this is the location of these three parcels. There's the current zoning, where this rezoning was approved by the planning commissions, recommended by the planning department. We've had no calls or comments since first reading.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Seven A, new business, consider on first reading ordinance O-150101 amending the Cookeville Municipal Code Title 14, Chapter 7 and 8, relative to stormwater management and repair in buff zones. Mr. Brown.
Mayor and council, this ordinance reflects the changes that our permit, stormwater permit with the state requires us to make. We have three changes, major changes that'll affect. The first one is to buffer zones. Presently, our buffer zone is 50 feet and only applies to streams. The new regulations apply to streams, wetlands, and ponds, and other waters of the state, and it'll be dependent on the drainage area, on how big it is. If it's less than a square mile, the buffer will be 30 feet. If it's greater than a square mile, it'll be 60 feet. The other one pertains to developments of greater than an acre. Presently, we don't require any of the first flush of rain, which is the first, when it first starts raining, that's called the first flush. Presently, we don't require any of that to be retained on the site permanently. The new regulations require us to keep the first inch on-site, and that'll be accomplished by either evaporation or rain gardens or some other manner that we will look at. Each site will be dependent on that, on how you would do that. And the third difference is the record-keeping that the property owners will have to do. It's a little more involved than it has been. They'll have to do an annual inspection every year. They can do that themselves and keep a record of it. And every, at least once every five years, they'll need to hire a landscape architect or an engineer to do an inspection to make sure their detention pond or whatever stormwater management system they're using is still working properly. Recommend your approval and glad to answer any questions you have.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Brown, this is getting us in compliance with the state, right?
Yes, there's a standard. Most, all the cities of our size have the same regulations, permits, and they all have to do the same thing, so this would make us in compliance with our permit.
Well, I was reading, do we, does the city have a board of environmental appeals?
Yes, they do.
All right.
That was, the original permit that we obtained about 13 or 14 years ago required us to set up a board.
So, Greg, so we're reacting to legislation that was passed in Nashville as it relates to what we need to do here? Is that fair assessment?
Well, I'm not sure it was passed in legislation. It's part of the Clean Water Act that EPA sets up these rules, and TDEC, part of the state, is, they have to enforce them.
So it's also, there's federal legislation involved?
Yes.
Okay. Who would, and I'm asking to speculate here, who might, usually when there's something in Nashville or Washington, there's winners and there's losers. Who would be the losers and who would object to this and why would they object to it?
Probably developers.
Maybe, I'm asking to speculate a little bit. You don't?
I would guess developers because that would be more costly to develop, there'd be more work to do. It'd be the losers. The winners would probably be the people downstream from the development, because if they're keeping the first inch on-site, that's going to help alleviate some flooding, plus it'll improve the stormwater quality.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I fail, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, I failed to ask this in our work session, but I think I probably know the answers just for clarity, though. This only applies to new development, correct?
Correct.
And is it?
Or redevelopment.
Or redevelopment. What do you mean by redevelopment?
If they want to tear down a building and redo it on the same side or have a significant addition that's over an acre, it would apply to that.
So if you've got, if we've got a retailer here in town that has some property, they want to enlarge their site, and it encompasses more than an acre, they'll have to, their entire property will have to comply with this, with new set of codes? Is that, is that their?
Well, look at each case individually. It may or may not. It depends on what they're doing at the present time.
And who, who, what are, which of our departments enforce that? I didn't ask that earlier. Your department?
Yes.
Public Works, okay. And then, is this involve residential?
It could involve subdivisions. It would depend on the subdivision and the size of it and where it's at and a drainage basin.
Because there's a big difference if it involves individual, if it involves individual residential, there's not, I don't, not many lots being developed out here that are bigger than an acre. However, there are some subdivisions that could pop up, especially if we have more, if some of these companies come in that will encompass more than an acre, and I was concerned. I didn't, I just, it didn't pop in my head to ask that. So it might, it may affect them.
It could, yes.
Okay. Probably raise costs. Do you have anything?
No, this, if it applies to all cities our size, it applies to us, so we've got to figure what the Clean Water Act is.
Yeah, every city that's got a permit with the state, it does apply to them.
Yeah, that was going to be my point. Obviously, number one, we have no option. We have to do it. Number two, it doesn't put us at a competitive economic disadvantage because everybody around us is having to do it as well, so.
If they have a permit. If the smaller cities, like Mollgood does not, or Baxter does not.
And I'm assuming, Greg, if Cookeville or some other city municipality opted not to pass this, then probably they'd risk withholding the federal funds or some, some step.
Or they'll probably get fined.
Okay.
And just in my mind, in our area, I mean, we are the only, as far as cities our size, we're the only game in town for, for a large, a large area. And so this could have some impact on us, but I think, I think we have a lot to offer. I think we'll, we'll, this bump of the road, I guess, so to speak, we won't have an issue with that. We'll be fine.
Yeah. Basically, it's every town, over 10,000 people, just about every one of those has a permit.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Seven B, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an engineering contract for wastewater treatment, plant, storage facility, site suitability evaluation. Mr. Kelly.
Mayor and council, back in 2012, we entered into a engineering contract with Gresham Smith and Partners to provide, to develop a hydraulic model of our wastewater collection system for the city of Cookeville. That model was going to help us determine capital, future capital projects, and any problems that may show up, hopefully before they became a real issue. During this last summer, we did some model runs, trying to determine where is, is the proper location for, and the best bang for our buck, to look at a storage basin for, to handle certain storm events, flows that are getting to the wastewater treatment plant. And so we now have, and this is a treatment plant, and this is the general area we're looking at, and this contract will perform a geotechnical and all of the things necessary to give us and develop a report for us to determine, is that site suitable to put that size of a tank in that general area? And so when we get this done, we'll sort of have a better understanding. Can we even look at putting some, a tank there, or are we going to have to go somewhere else and look? We've negotiated a price with Gresham Smith for $54,000. I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item seven C, consider awarding bid for 2015 CIPP project. Mr. Kelly.
Mayor and council, annually, we do a sewer rehabilitation project or trying to rebuild our infrastructure in the sewer system and try to appropriate a certain amount of our revenues there to rebuild our system. This year, this is a 2015 project. This is a general area. It's sort of scattered around the city. We have open bids. The low bidder was In situ form Technologies Incorporated, $415,920.25, and we would recommend approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All vote?
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Seven D, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for specialized architectural engineering services for the proposed police department headquarters and future facilities. Mr. Evans, or Chief Evans.
Mayor and council, as you know, some weeks ago, we kind of began the process of looking into the opportunity to build a new police department. We began that process by soliciting a request for qualification. We received six firms that submitted, submitted their proposals, and out of those six firms, then we scored those and vetted those proposals, certainly by many of the members of the council were involved and several directors within the city of Cookeville. The decision was made at that time to negotiate with the firm that received a high score, and that was Architect Design Group out of Winter Park, Florida. We met with the president of that company, Mr. Ian Reeves, in an effort to determine what the cost would be for a needs assessment and other scope or services. He subsequently submitted the proposal to us, and as you can see there by this slide, there's basically three phases in there that we asked him to look at or give us a proposal on. One is the needs assessment, and the cost of that is $22,480. A site analysis and master plan, $16,820. And then also, part of that service, he would do a conceptual building design for $10,560, for a total cost of $49,860. I think all of you have seen the entire proposal, but I'd be glad to answer any questions on that. This will require a budget amendment, but I would ask that you approve, Mr. Shipley, into entering a contract with Architect Design Group.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Budget amendment.
Motion, a second. Any discussion now?
All three of them. Are we just doing the needs or are we doing all?
Yeah, that's, that's my question. The conceptual building design, now, I know we had discussed at, at some point after we chose the, after whoever did the needs assessment, then we would come back and open it up to a design competition, for lack of a better word, among anybody who wanted to design. Why would we pay $10,000 now to do that?
I think what part of this plan is that they're supposed to look up, look at three sites that we, that we choose, and I guess they're going to look at those sites for us, if, again, if that's what we want them to do. I think we're, you know, those were the scope of services that we, we talked about in this meeting. I would believe that we could choose all or part or none of these services.
So the site, the actual locations would be covered under one, one B, right?
Correct. And I think, if I read this proposal correctly, they would look, look at up to three sites for us.
Under one B, so one C?
Would be, they would look at each of those sites and just do a conceptual drawing, and it's nothing in detail. It is certainly a conceptual drawing on that site and how a building may look. It is certainly just their vision, if you will, of what a building on that site would look like, and, and again, we would have input into what the, even the conceptual design would look like.
Mr. Mayor, as far as the design of the building, that part, we may very well kick out, and that, I don't think we've seen a contract yet. I mean, what we've basically seen here is just a letter of proposal. This basically just allows us to negotiate a contract, and our city attorney will have to go through it, and we could very well say, look, we don't want item one C. We're going to open that up to everybody, so.
Well, I mean, and to make another point, each of these groups that bid, or that did this, that there was a local, pretty much all of them had a local tie-in, and this one, in fact, has a local tie-in, too. I just think it's very important that we do business locally when we can. I think we're all in agreement with that. And that's my only concern about spending, and you can negotiate in the contract, but spending $10,000 now, when we're going to come back and possibly open it up to others, I would hope we would, and we'd be spending the money again. That's, that's all. But I'm fine approving the contract if you have the ability to negotiate within that contract, to leave parts of it out as we discuss it.
No, and I mean, we, we haven't seen a contract. This is just a proposal that basically details their scope of services, and we can pick and choose what we want out of that.
Okay.
And I think we need to review the contract and negotiate certain terms, and then possibly even bring it back to the council if we need to, if there's an issue.
Okay, that's fine.
I've got a question about this. What we're paying for now is to look at up to three sites, potential sites.
That's the way I understand. If we enter into a contract, as Mr. Shipley said, I mean?
If we enter into this contract, we can do up to three sites. Do we then bring in the outside, all the architects to design for the three sites and pick the best, or do we pick the site before we bring in the outside firm, the other firms and all the architectural firms? That's, what's our timeline? Do we look at three places, up to three places, or do we look at one, or decide on one place before, yeah? That's what I'm wondering. What's the council's thought?
Put on the sites, yeah.
Do we pick one site based on the architect, or do we pick up to three sites? And one site might be better in some phases, and another site might be better for other things, and then kind of pick it from there?
Well, I don't know. I don't know. I guess, the way I kind of see it, I guess the way I understood it, and maybe I'm just completely wrong, the way I, this, this is, they're just going to, they're trying to find what our needs are till, for, till 2025 or 2035 or whatever, for 20 years. And in that, they've got to find what our needs are and what those, what that space is, and then they got to figure out where, if, of the three sites, how it'll fit. I mean, that's the way I understand it. You've got, say we need 50,000 square feet, I don't know how much we need, but let's just say that's just a number.
Hope we don't need that much.
Okay. Out of 25, 50, but whatever. So say we need that amount, and we've got three sites, and Ricky, you like a certain site, and I like a certain site. How's, how's that, how's those needs, that's, that actual space, how's that 50,000 square feet going to fit on there? And if you look at it, you go, dang, it's just not, it ain't going to fit, it's not going to work. It could work, but you got to break it up, it may not, it may not fit our needs. That's kind of the way I saw what this all was, but I, this, and, Bill, I'm kind of confused right now, but I, if this does go to a contract, it does give us, well, I'm hearing it, and hear from our, from our legal advisor that we, and our city manager, that we do have some time to kind of look at this at a little more, with more specificity, I suppose. Is that, is that fair to say, Chief Evans?
I believe it is, and I think, you know, to Mr. Shipley's point, this is simply a proposal, and, and again, I think we can, again, we can accept under contract if we decide in what direction we want them to go. All are part of this, and their proposal is, is to look at three sites for us and look at the feasibility of those sites based upon that needs assessment that would help us select a site possibly.
So Chief, let me ask you, help me understand this. So if this, if this council passes this item tonight, we're obviously not entering into a contract.
No.
Okay, what are we doing?
This is simply giving Mr. Shipley the authority to negotiate with them.
Negotiate.
And enter into a contract.
And then, all the contract is going to do is give them the right to do the needs assessment and analyze the sites and then make a recommendation to the council. And then you can decide if you like any of the three sites, or you want to look farther, and you can decide what you want to do about your design, and do you want to hire as the architect and the, and put the project out for bid for contractors at a later time. But these are just recommendations, I think, and then when the contract is presented, we can, Mr. Shipley can recommend which ones he wants to actually commit to and then bring those back to the council for final approval on that. But this is, these are, these are the numbers for those components, I think, that they propose.
Up to, so we're basically approving, pass a contract up to this amount?
Correct.
All right.
And it's not really a contract at this point. You'll, you will approve the final contract.
Okay.
So we're approving, we're asking the city manager to enter into negotiations.
I'm just going to start negotiating.
That's what this item does.
You're just selecting this vendor to negotiate with.
Right.
Any other questions? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, at this time, we'll have any citizens who would like to speak before the council on any item that was a non-agenda item. Do we have anybody? We'd like to recognize, we have two guests from Leadership Putnam. They spent a day studying county and city government today, I guess, and Neil Markham and Marty Maynard, so welcome to our meeting. Anyone else? All right, the fun begins. Item nine, nine A, hold a public hearing on the annual progress report on the plan of services for the following annexation areas: Old Sparta Road, Road, Horace Lewis Road, Old Bridge Road, Falling Water River, Buck Mountain Road, Dry Valley Road, East Highway 70 North, Interstate 40, West Cookeville Interstate 40, Shagrag Road, Rebecca Place Bunker Hill Road, Bunker Hill Road Love Lady Road, Free Hill Road, North Washington Avenue, South Willow Avenue, and Bennett Road Extension Area. Mr. Mills? And please be quick.
Well, it's only about six pages, so. Mayor and council members, when, of course, you realize, when we annex, we're required to do a plan of services for any area that we annexed, and that plan of services specifies what services will be provided and when they'll be provided. The services that we have to cover include police and fire protection, water service, sewer service, solid waste collection and disposal, street maintenance, street name signs, planning and zoning, inspection services, electrical service, street lining, recreational facilities, and natural gas service. Since 1998, when through Public Chapter 1101, we are required to do an annual report and publish that report in the paper. The report was recently published, and tonight, we're doing the report, the public hearing portion of this. Since 1998, we have annexed 18 areas requiring plan of services for, and we also have three more that will be coming up, will be added next year that are in the process of their six-month reports. But anyway, we have 11 areas remaining for which we have to complete certain services to complete the plan of services. The first area is the Old Sparta Road, Horace Lewis Road area, which you can see on the screen there, it's right in here. The only service remaining to be completed in this area is sewer service. The plan of services for this area specifies that sewer would be provided within 15 years after the effective date of annexation, which would be approximately June of this year. And I'm pleased to report that sewer line construction is underway within this area and is scheduled to be completed before June of 2015. The second area to report on is the Old Bridge Road, Falling Water River area, which is contiguous to the Horace Lewis Road area. The only service remaining to be completed in here is sewer service. The plan of services specifies that sewer would be provided to this area based on the same criteria, standards, policies used to determine the expansion of sanitary sewer service in the unserved persons, portions of the present corporate limits. We have initiated sewer construction with this, within this area as a part of the sewer project within the Horace Lewis Road area, and it's estimated that approximately 111 hundred and eleven parcels would be served by the completion of this project this year. The Buck Mountain Road, Dry Valley Road area, which is up here, all services have been provided, with the exception of sanitary sewer and electrical service. Sanitary sewer service, the plan of services specifies it will be extended, as we do in the rest of the city, and that electrical service would be provided within three years after the city acquires the service area. All customers are expected to be served by the electric department within three months, and that would complete the electric service requirement, and all that would remain would be sewer. In the East Highway Seventy, I-40 area, all services have been provided, with the exception, and that's through here, all services have been provided, with the exception of water service and sanitary sewer. The plan of services specifies that water sewer, sewer service improvements would be completed within fifteen years after the effective date of annexation, and that sewer service would be provided, based as we do in the rest of the city. There's one additional hydrant that needs to be completed in this area to meet the water service provision requirements, and that is scheduled to be installed this year. There's two phases of sewer installation that have been completed, which serves approximately one hundred and sixty-five parcels in this area. In the West Cookville Interstate Forty area, which is, which was one of the larger annexations we've done, matter of fact, I think it is the largest annexation we've ever done, the plan of services specifies, excuse me, we still remain to complete water service, sanitary sewer, some street lighting and electrical service. Plan of services specifies that water service will be provided within five years after we acquire the service area, that electrical service will be provided within one year after the city acquires the service area. Electric service and street lighting have been provided to approximately ninety-five percent of the area, and will be completed as part of the I-45th Interchange Project. The installation of water and sewer service in the Highlands Business Park has been completed, or was completed in, in 2013, and an evaluation of the acquisition of the water service area north of I-40 was completed this past year, and a report is being finalized, south of I-40, thirty-three water customers have been acquired. In the Shagrag Road area, which is up here, all services have been provided, with the exception of sewer, the plan of services specifies that it will be provided, based on the same criteria we use to determine the extension of sewer in unserved portions of the present corporate limits. The Rebecca Place, Bunker Hill Road area annexation, the only service remaining to be completed is, again, sewer. The plan of services for this annexation specifies that sewer will be provided within twenty years after the effective date of annexation, so we have approximately seven or eight years left on this annexation. Sanitary sewer has been provided to two customers so far in this area. The Bunker Hill Road, Love Lady Road area, which is south of this, of the Rebecca Place annexation, the only services remaining in here to be completed are sewer and natural gas. As with the Rebecca Place subdivision, Rebecca Place annexation, the plan of services specifies that sewer will be provided within twenty years after the effective date, and that natural gas would be provided based upon the same criteria, or based upon customer demand and when economically feasible. Natural gas has been provided to fourteen customers. In the Free Hill Road area, all services have been provided, with the exception of sewer, the plan of services specifies that sewer will be provided within twenty-five years after the effective date of annexation. South Willow Avenue area, all services have been provided, with the exception of sewer and street lighting, the plan of services specifies that sewer would be extended, based on the same criteria that we currently use for unserved portions within the city. Sewer has been extended to thirteen parcels. The electric department is working with the electric cooperative for the completion of the installation of street lighting, which is expected to be completed within one month. The Bennett Road Extension Area, which is the most recent large annexation we've completed, all services have been provided, with the exception of water service and sanitary sewer. Water service rates for existing customers have been reduced to the inside rate. Negotiations have been initiated with the Double Springs Utility District for acquisition of the service area. The plan of services specifies that sanitary sewer will be provided, based upon the same criteria that's utilized to provide services or extend sewer within the current corporate limits, and that is the completion of the report. Thank you, thank you.
That was pretty fast. That was fast, thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have any other comments from the council? On any matter?
Now, this was a public hearing, so if we've got anybody that has any comments?
Does anyone have any comments from the public?
Let me, a question, just not directly related to this, but it's my understanding that, oh, we're going forward, that the legislature has, has passed a state law, that, that, I guess I'm incorrect on that, any annexations must be approved by referendum of those impacted, is that pretty much what we're looking at now, or is that overstated?
It's slightly overstated, we're currently still under a moratorium on for annexation except by referendum, unless in areas within urban growth boundary, and you have all property owners are in favor of that annexation, which one of the more recent annexations, we did by ordinance, but we are prohibited from doing any by city's initiative. We can't go out, identify an area, and annex it without having all property owners in favor, or by doing referendum. Now, that's through, end of May, the legislation, when they come back, they're gonna be looking at making more changes, so it's up in the air, what we're, actually will have with annexation legislation, so, could all change after July 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, that closes our public hearing portion of the meeting, any other comments? We'll be adjourned.